So bear with us. Good evening. It is 5:01 on August 9, 2021, and I'd like to call this committee as a whole of the Lansing City Council to order, and please ask that the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Spatifor?
Present.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Fitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Here.
Councilmember Beck?
Present.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present. Thank you. Before we begin the meeting, I will just remind council members and those participating in the audience that face coverings aren't required in the city of Lansing facilities. That extends to meetings of the Lansing City Council and its committees. For more information on Lansing's COVID-19 protocols, please visit lansingmi.gov/coronavirus. But it looks like everyone here is cooperating, so I thank you all for your cooperation as we embark on our first masked meeting together. First thing up is our minutes from July 26, 2021. Mr. Vice President.
I would move the meeting minutes as presented.
Meetings have been moved. Any conversation? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Call a close, please say nay. Minutes carry. Next item on our agenda is public comment on agenda items. Members of the public wishing to speak to the committee, you will have three minutes to do so. We ask that you please identify yourself for the record. There are also cards that you may deposit in that clear bin there on the podium. You will have three minutes to speak, and please limit your comments to items on the agenda for the committee this evening.
Can I lower my mask?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, my name is Hugh McNichol IV, and I'm a lifelong resident of South Lansing. On June 12, this body, the Lansing City Council unanimously voted yes to let Lansing voters decide whether or not to adopt ranked choice voting for our local elections. It was a historic moment for voter empowerment in the state of Michigan, and you all could have been very proud. Then you received a letter from our county clerk, Barb Byram, accusing you of, quote, "not thinking it through," unquote. I hope she was wrong about that because most of you said that you'd done your homework, and I don't want to think that you're liars or the type that doesn't do your homework. In Barb's letter, she erroneously claims, quote, "First and foremost, the current election equipment and software in Ingham County does not allow for ranked choice voting," unquote. That's an outright lie. Ingham County uses Dominion Voting Machines with software called Democracy Suite Version 5.2, also owned by Dominion. This voting machine combination, software combination, has already been used to conduct RCV elections in Santa Fe, New Mexico, St. Paul, Minnesota, and other cities throughout our country. It's concerning to me, and it should be concerning to everyone who cares about our elections and our rights to vote, that our county clerk doesn't know the capabilities of the voting machines or software that she's tasked with overseeing. Our voting machine vendor is already suing one whole high-profile Michigan politician for lying about their equipment. If she keeps doing it, they should consider doing the same for Barb Byram. Not only is she fear-mongering and spreading misinformation about our voting machines, she's spreading misinformation about our rights as voters, too. She keeps insisting that RCV is illegal even though it's already been used and upheld in our state, and she's never passed the bar exam. She's not legally allowed to practice law in Michigan. She doesn't live in our city. She's infringing on our constitutionally protected rights to vote and our rights as a city in the state of Michigan. Michigan compiled laws, Section 117.3, clearly states that cities have a right to determine the way we conduct our own elections, and explicitly allows for, quote, "preferential ballots," a synonym for RCV. Lawyers within our state's Bureau of Elections office cited the Home Rule Cities Act when writing in 2019 that RCV is legal for cities to adopt. Ann Arbor City Council was scheduled to vote on a similar RCV proposal shortly after you all passed it here in June, but after reading the same letters that you received from Barb and the other, decided to postpone while they double-checked their homework. After discussing it with their city attorney and reading emails from the lawyers within the Bureau of Elections, they voted 10 to 1 to let their voters decide. I'm here today urging you to let Lansing's voters vote on the same ranked choice voting proposal which you already passed unanimously. Thank you for your time.
Any other members of the public wishing to address the committee?
Good evening. My name is Matt Coiman, and I'm here to talk about Item 6C on the agenda, the TEFRA hearing for Lansing Charter Academy. I wanted to just let you guys know what the hearing is about and why we're here. This transaction does not create any liability or obligation for the city of Lansing, does not require the use of any state or local bonds or bonding capacity. Campus Partners One, a Michigan nonprofit, requests a public hearing as required by the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility, short name TEFRA, Act of 1982. Campus Partners One intends to partner with Lansing Charter Academy in the city of Lansing to refinance the school facilities through tax-exempt municipal bonds. This school is a part of a larger transaction with schools in other counties and states. As required by IRS Code, a TEFRA hearing must be held in the municipality where the facility is located before any bonds can be issued, and we request that you hold that public hearing to gather any input from members of the public on this bond issuance. Once a hearing is held and approved, Campus Partner One intends to seek bonds through the Industrial Development Authority of the county of La Paz, Arizona. Campus Partners One will work with Lansing Charter Academy to modify their agreements, seek local bond approval, board approval for this proposal. Only after this approval will any bonds be issued. The bond transaction will result in a reduction of aggregate lease payments for Lansing Charter Academy. Some benefits, there's no liabilities for the local community, provides each school with access to low-cost, long-term capital at a 30-year maturity, which locks in the school's lease rate for 30 years. This is responsive to requests from the state authorizers, as well as our partner school boards. Creates greater transparency for school costs, greater school board independence and autonomy, local board ownership of school equipment, continued collaboration between boards and national heritage academies of school management for school management operations. Public bond market has proven low-risk, low-cost means to finance charter schools, and we are hoping Lansing Charter Academy will be able to benefit from those. Lansing Charter Academy has existed in the area since 2009, and has sold 455 students, and provides 47 high-quality, full-time jobs, as well as other part-time positions. Each school is governed by an independent local board who will review and approve the proposed transaction in a public meeting. And again, there's no liability for the city of Lansing, and the bonds will not be issued through the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak?
Loretto Stanaway, and I'm here tonight to talk about the ranked choice voting issue. I have several reasons that I do not support that, but the primary one at this point is that under certain circumstances, it is conceivable that any given voter's votes could be completely canceled in an election. It's entirely possible that a voter could be disenfranchised, and even if it's only one voter in an election, that's one vote too many. All votes matter. This program or project or proposal, whatever you want to refer to it as, in my opinion, is fatally and fundamentally flawed, and does not warrant your support. Thank you.
Max Donovan, to put it briefly, Lansing is the only place I'd like to call my home. I'd like to start by answering the point that was just made here. No one will end up disenfranchised. Exhausted ballots are a thing in a ranked choice system. If someone votes for a candidate who is dropped by the process of ranked choice voting, who doesn't support any other candidates, that's not disenfranchising that voter. They simply wouldn't have voted for any other candidates. We know they wouldn't, because they had the opportunity to, and they didn't. They're not being disenfranchised. They're still making the choice whether or not to make their voice heard past a certain point. There's no question of enfranchisement there. Second, I'd like to continue discussing what was brought up at the last meeting, about how elections may be run improperly, elections may be run illegally, and if that were the case, some scare tactic disaster would occur. This is patently untrue for a few reasons, and we're going to get into a lot of the legals of that during a conversation that happens later today. But first and foremost, what I'd like to mention is that these elections won't happen until it's legal. Not only because the measure explicitly says this won't occur until it's legal, which you guys know, I assume, because I assume you read it before you passed it, but also because the charter, not our amendment, but the charter as it currently exists, says that we have a Board of Elections here in the city, consisting of our dearly beloved city attorney, who you're already deferring to, the mayor, of which one person who's supposed to be in this room is, and another person is still trying to be, and our city clerk, who is eminently qualified and has years of experience handling city elections. They make all relevant decisions regarding how elections are handled here. They ultimately will be the ones who decide when to implement this. Do you have so little faith in the attorney you hired, the clerk and the mayor that we elect, that you don't think you can handle something as simple as a city election properly? Do you have so little faith in your own ability to hold those executives accountable that you don't think you can look into it and make sure it's safe? Do you think that our county clerk, who is here, because she did her due diligence, is highly competent and has concerns that she's voiced, would refuse to voice concerns about the legality of our election procedures? We are not going to implement ranked choice until and unless it is safe and legal to do so. You know this, and we know this. All this does is give the people a chance to speak in favor of it, and give Lansing a chance to heal the divisions that every single one of you has suffered from. There's not a single person here who hasn't been bruised by the toxicity of our environment. There's not a single person here who hasn't bruised someone else. The status quo isn't serving anybody here. You guys have the chance to serve all of us. Please take that chance. Thank you.
Any other wishing?
Jim Delain, 2520 Harding Avenue, City of Lansing. Thank you for your continued efforts to get input on putting the ranked choice voting charter change on the November ballot. I see on the agenda tonight that you're going to hear from Barb Byram, Jim Lancaster, Jim Smurka. You know who you're not hearing from tonight? Michigan's Attorney General. I understand two years ago, council reached out to the AG's office when this ballot issue was a theoretical, and as several people know, the AG doesn't respond to theoreticals. How can you get the AG to weigh in? Put the matter on the November ballot. Barb Byram is not the Attorney General and can't speak for the Attorney General. Jim Lancaster is not the Attorney General, can't speak for the Attorney General. Jim Smurka is not the Attorney General, he can't speak for the Attorney General. The only way to hear from the Attorney General is to put this issue on the ballot, and that needs to be done tonight. There was a comment that if council passes a ballot question that is against state law, there will be repercussions. No, there won't. The AG's office won't let you put something illegal on the ballot. The number-one law enforcement agent in the state of Michigan won't let that happen. You last voted to put this on the ballot on July 12. The very next day, July 13, and this is in your packet, the city clerk sent those resolutions to the governor for her and the Attorney General's approval. That's the way it works. Voting to put this on the November ballot triggers the checks and balances you all want. It goes to the AG and the governor. Then it goes to the voters. Then, if passed, it goes to the Lansing Election Commission, which makes logistical decisions to be approved by the Michigan Board of Elections. Every check and balance begins with a vote to put these proposals on the November ballot. Who can be against that? Who in this room will say, "Don't approve this. Don't, we don't want to hear from the Attorney General. We know more than the Attorney General"? To not approve this for the ballot, to not get the Attorney General's feedback, to think you know it all? Well, that would just be arrogant. Don't be arrogant. Put ranked choice voting on the November ballot. Let's hear from the Attorney General. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to address the committee? Saying none, we'll move on. Our first item of business are special presentations. First to present before us is Mr. James Lancaster, representing ranked Michigan vote. Mr. Lancaster, we will ask you to come on down to the table here in the well. We'll ask that you keep your prepared comments to about 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, members of the City Council. We're here.
Bye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you're sitting, push the green light.
There we go. Sorry. Haven't done this in a while. Thank you, members of the City Council. I am Jim Lancaster. I am the attorney for ranked my vote. I'll start out with the fact that I know there are some of you who know me fairly well, some of you don't. I've been an attorney for over 35 years, specializing in a number of areas, but particularly in election law, campaign finance law, and so on. I first want to recognize the fact that my comments today are not directed to whether this is a good idea for Lansing. That's up to you. I have proceeded on the assumption that, based on the 6-0 vote, that you decided that this is something that the residents of the city of Lansing should at least consider. I say this from a perspective of someone who I was formerly a partner in Miller Canfield, which I know a firm many of you are familiar with. I did work for the city early in my career. A lot of my specialty, frankly, was in providing outside counsel to a lot of municipalities in a variety of issues, election law, Freedom of Information Act, Open Means Act, condemnation law, a lot of different areas. I also come to you with the perspective of someone who I lived in the city of Duett. I was on the city of Duett City Council for 20 years, and I know how, when I was a city council member, I expected attorneys who came before me, either attorneys that we, the city, hired to be our outside counsel, or attorneys that were coming to advocate for their client in front of me as a city council member. I know what that's like. I don't have just merely empathy for that. I have sympathy for that. And I want you to know that any comments I make tonight, I hope you understand that I totally respect the fact that as a policy matter, this is up to you. This is not up to me, and I'm not advocating it. And I think there's good ideas for it, and I am a proud Big Red from Class of '78 back a few years ago. But I want to say that that's what I'm here. I'm here to talk about the legality of this and the technical issues that have been raised about it. First of all, on the legality issues, the primary point I've been trying to make is that what both Ms. Byram and what Mr. Brader have ignored and not addressed are Sections 321 and Section 323 of the Michigan election law. Section 321 of the Michigan election law says that city charter provisions will govern how city elections are conducted. Now, I will tell you this, the election law, and I was going to bring it here, it's the election law, I've got a three-ring binder that's just like three and a half inches big, and it was hot out, and I figured I'd be sweating like a pig if I brought it, tried to carry it up here. But it's like very complicated, but it's a law I'm very familiar with. And I will tell you this, if you look at the city election law, or I'm sorry, the state election law, there are chapters four through 24 of that law, have individual sections that talk about each election that the state conducts, starting with the presidential election, going all the way down to village elections. Every one of those sections except one has provision. Let me just back up for a second. Most of those provisions within those chapters deal with issues like, if you recall, who was it, who dropped out of the Eighth Congressional District race, the Little House of the Prairie woman? You know, they deal with issues like, what happens if your candidate drops out after the primary? They deal with issues like that, the mechanics of how in a particular election, a congressional election, a house election, whatever, how do you deal with those issues? Every one of those sections, except one, states that the Board of Canvassers shall determine who received the most votes and declare that person as being duly elected. There's only one chapter within that, and within that section of the election law, that doesn't say that, is Chapter 15, dealing with city elections. And that's where Sections 321 and Sections 323 come into play. Section 321 of the statute, again, this is under Chapter 15 of the election law, says that the city charter controls how elections take place. Section 323 states that essentially you don't have to strictly comply with the election law like all the other elections have to. The reason why is simple. It's twopole. Number one is because Article VII, Section 22 of the Michigan Constitution, gives you, as members of a home rule city, an extraordinary amount of autonomy in terms of how you conduct your elections. Secondly, Section 117.3 of the Michigan Home Rule Cities Act says that you can, in your charter, provide for what's called preferential voting. And the Michigan Supreme Court and other courts have determined that what that means is types of voting like ranked choice voting. Let me repeat that. You have the unique power, as a member of a city council, as a home rule city, to determine how you want to do your elections, something that can't occur in any other election. And I will tell you candidly, I represent a group that wants to implement ranked choice voting on a statewide basis, and their legal challenges are much broader, and they're going to have to bring probably a ballot issue, changing the Constitution to make it happen. But with respect to home rule cities, that's not true. That is absolutely not true. And so what I'm saying to you is this, is that allegations that it's not legal are just frankly not true. And I say this as a handicap, not knowing what Ms. Byram may say in response, or what Mr. Smurka has advised you on. But I will tell you, based on my 35 years of practicing law, I am convinced of this, and I'm convinced that, now, having said that, I also will tell you this candidly. It's not been judicially challenged. This is kind of a unique issue. The city of Ferndale has been dealing with this for many years, and the Elections Bureau has been putting up some obstacles. But having said that, I want to emphasize to you something that I sent to you, and looking at the agenda, I'm not sure that, I know I sent this letter to you. It wasn't mentioned on the agenda as an item that was distributed to you. But there was a letter I sent to Governor Whitmer dated August 4. In that, I provided emails that basically showed that the two senior elections officials, elections attorneys in the Bureau of Elections have said that it is legal. They have acknowledged that this is allowable under Michigan law. In other words, you can, the city of Lansing can implement ranked choice voting without changing Michigan law. Period. Now, Mr. Brader at the time, but this is before he was appointed as the Director of the Bureau of Elections, agreed with that. He now subsequently has said no. He's saying, he's now told, reading you a letter more recently, which I was astonished at, saying that suddenly it's illegal. I understand how he can say that. But what I'm also more astonished with, and I hope you will question, and again, I'm hoping that as a result of this conversation, you will at least say, let's at least put it on the ballot, because, and Mr. Delain said, it's true, you know, ultimately, the, actually, the governor, although the governor consults the Attorney General, but the governor and Attorney General will not let you put this on the ballot if it's illegal. So what I'm asking you is, give this a chance. And I think, and again, I don't want to get into all the legal gollygook, and I don't, again, I don't know what Mr. Smurka has advised you on, but I would just say to you this, give this a chance. And, because I think it is legal. I think the judicial decision you made was right, and I think you've allowed at the last minute some people to come in and say they're concerned about it. There's one last thing I want to say, and Mr. McNichol made some comments about Ms. Byram. I'd like to disassociate myself from those comments, because I don't think ad hominem tax, I mean, I, you know, look, I took the bar exam. It's hard to get through. Look, I don't want to get into that. That's not what I'm about. I want to just talk about the law. And I want to talk about what is appropriate to happen here. And again, as a policy matter, that's not my decision. I'm not here to advocate for this policy. I'm the lawyer for a group that obviously advocates for this. But I'm not here to say, I'm not here to, you know, beat anybody down personally or anything like that. I just want to say, dude, this is what the law is. I think that, again, those of you who know me know I have a vast amount of experience in this, and I'm just saying, I think, I'm hoping that you'll put it on, on the ballot, because I think it's an innovative thing. But whether it's right for Lansing, it's just as, if any of you came in front of me when I was on city council and says, "Jim, you need to do this, because this is the right thing to do," I would object to that. And I'm not saying that to you. I'm just addressing what the law is, what I believe the law is. The other issue I'd like to address is the technical issues. Now, you should have all been provided a memo that, or an email that Quish Swob received today from Dominion Voting Systems. And I had previously provided to all of you a document that I had found in response to a FOIA request that I submitted to the Bureau of Elections, asking for everything involving East Point. Now, let me address for a moment, and East Point, East Point admittedly is a different situation. That was a situation where the Secretary of State's Office, the Bureau of Elections, they were compelled to go along with this because it was a federal consent decree. The supremacy clause of the U.S. Constitution says that federal law controls. Having said that, if you look in detail at the documentation of what really happened there, the Bureau of Elections worked very cooperatively with the city of East Point. They basically went through a process of getting the system validated, so that the Bureau of Elections ultimately said, yeah, this is okay. Now, there's parts of it we don't like, but we're okay with it. And in particular, if you give me just a moment here, I'd like to pull out, and put my glasses on to find it, something that I put in my letter to Governor Whitmer on July 26, if I can just find it here for just a moment, if you bear with me. There we go. In that letter, which I know is part of your packet today, I talk about the city of East Point situation. And in particular in that letter, I refer to the discussion beginning at page three, and going into page four, and so on. I researched very carefully the information regarding what happened with that consent decree. And mind you, there's some of the information regarding the emails and so on regarding the Department of State, which, I got to be honest with you, I submitted a FOIA request to them in March, and I just got a response about three weeks ago, two or three weeks ago. So there's some of the background on this I didn't receive until recently. But if you look at my letter, it talks about, there were three issues that they addressed specifically in the consent decree. And I like to talk to you about, and the reason why I want to talk to you about this is this, I'm not saying that there are technical issues that have to be dealt with. There are. In fact, if you look at my letter from August 4, you'll see that, for example, Melissa Mallorme, there's an email from her talking about the fact that she's looking forward to putting together statewide standards, because Ms. Mallorme, Ms. Lori Bourbonet, who are two senior attorneys in the Elections Bureau, they're hired by Chris Thomas, who I think some of you know, is like a legend in the elections law, elections law area, hired them. They were his top lieutenants, and they said that this was legal. And they said, "We're looking forward to saying, look, we understand that there's some conflicts within some aspects of the election law and ranked choice voting, because the election law, as it was written, did not specifically contemplate anything other than plurality voting." In other words, whoever gets the most votes wins. But having said that, there was a process, and again, at the city council, I mean, you wouldn't want to hear me drone on about all the details of it, but I will just point to in my letter, there were three specific issues that were raised by the Elections Bureau that were worked out. The first issue was talking about Section 321 of the statute, and it says that, says that, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page here. I'm sorry, it's Section, I'm sorry, it's on page five, I apologize. It's Section 691, talks about, "A candidate's name shall not be placed or printed on more than one column on a ballot for the same office." Now, that becomes an issue in ranked choice voting, depending on how you do the ballot. Now, there's a way you can do it, where you have one column that has the names, and the other columns say first choice, second choice, third choice. That's a technical issue you have to work out. And I'm not here to tell you, I'm an expert in how to do this from the standpoint of what the best way to do it is. What I'm suggesting to you is, that law can be complied with. Now, I know the Bureau objected to it, but it can be complied with. And in fact, at the end of the day, East Point did a different method, and the Bureau said they were okay with it. Okay? That's one issue. The section issue dealt with Sections, MCL, Sections 736B through F. That has to do with the instructions on the ballot sleeve. And there's a provision in that law, in Section 736F, that says, the ballot marketing instructions, that what's provided in those sections there, those are the only instructions that are to be on the ballot sleeve. In other words, that's it. That's the only thing you can say. Now, unfortunately, those instructions, again, are not consistent with ranked choice voting. The question becomes, is that legally a basis to say you can't do ranked choice voting when the Michigan Constitution and the Home Rule Cities Act says you can? Ultimately, the Bureau of Elections yielded on that and said, okay. And then what they did in East Point is they put a slip in there, explaining how to do ranked choice voting. And this is one of those issues. If you decide to put it on the ballot, and if the voters approve it, something you'll have to work out. And I would very much look forward to working with you all to figure out how to work that out, because I'm pretty familiar with these issues. But again, is that, is that law alone a reason not to put this on the ballot, a ballot instruction sleeve, a ballot instruction on the sleeve? I mean, that's all we're talking about here. You're talking about letting a little technical provision, which is undoubtedly there, to basically make sure that all the clerks all over the state have the same instructions for everybody. And again, it presumes that it's only plurality voting. The point is, this can be worked out. Then the last, the third issue I've got, and this is on page six of my, again, my July 26 letter, talks about voting for multiple candidates. And, you know, there's vision there I highlight, says, except as otherwise provided in this subdivision, the electronic Then the last, the third issue I've got, and this is on page six of my, again, my July 26th letter, talks about voting for multiple candidates. And, you know, there's provision there I highlights, is except as otherwise provided in this subdivision, the electronic tabling equipment must reject all choices recorded on a elector's ballot for an entitled vote, or, I'm sorry, for an officer question, if the number of choices exceeds the number that that elector is entitled to vote for on that officer question. Now, the issue was raised by the Bureau was, okay, if you're ranking a second, third, fourth choice, are you voting a second, third, or fourth time? I would say to you frankly, the answer is, no, you're not. Because the way this works is that, let's say, for example, there's four people on the ballot. Candidates A, B, C, and D. Let's say you vote, choice number one is D, choice number two is C, choice number three is B, and choice number A, candidate A is, is your fourth choice. Okay, let's say candidate D drops off. Effectively, what happens is, let's say no one gets, first of all, if no one gets, if someone gets 50%, it's over. It's done. The votes are cast in stone, that's it. Having said that, if no one gets 50%, then what happens is, if like, again, if I voted for, my first choice was candidate D, and they, let's say that person got the least amount of votes, what happens is, I effectively didn't vote for that person, and they look for my second choice, and my vote's reassigned to that second choice. So again, and you go through this process iteratively. So the point is, is that, and again, this is kind of complicated maybe, but the point is, I mean, maybe to my mind, I was a math major in college, so I think about all these things, I don't know, it makes sense to me, I guess, I don't know. But anyways, point is, is that you never are voting for more than one person effectively. That's the law. So I mean, the bottom line is, I don't agree with the Bureau's position on this, and what the positions they took with East Point. But the point is, this can be worked out, and ultimately, they worked it out. And that's what I'm saying to all of you, is that I am, I stand here with my client, right, my vote, to say, we're here to work with you on this. This is an innovative idea. And mind you, the voters may not want this, and that's okay. And again, it's a policy matter, I'm not here to tell you that you have to, I mean, I'm certainly not going to tell you you have to, because if I said it, it'd be crazy, because I can't make it vote anyone but one. And again, I was a city council myself, and anyone, lawyer that told me I had to do something, I'd tell them, you're nuts, I can do whatever I want. The point is, I'm asking you to do what I think is right. You voted 6-0 before to put this on the ballot. Put this on the ballot. If you're concerned about this, look, again, the Attorney General and the governor aren't going to let you put this on the ballot if they think it's illegal. That just isn't going to happen. But not only that, but if you look down the road, now I want to get to further the road to this, let's say it gets on the ballot, you know, voters approve it, you've still got an election commission that has to go through this process. And again, when I talk about these sections in the election law, and I refer to section 321, 323. 323 in particular, which says, you only have to, I mean, you don't have to comply strictly with the election law. You're still going to have to comply with a lot of it. This voting equipment's still going to have to be verified. And in fact, if you look at the email that your clerk received today from Dominion, and it's responding in part, I hope you received the document that I provided to him, and I think all of you, from Dominion back from 2019, where they said, yes, we can do ranked choice voting. If you look that together, look, there are things that have to happen. The city's going to have to purchase the equipment. I don't know how much it's going to cost. I mean, the city's still going to have to do things, they're still going to have to deal with the state in getting the stuff verified. But I'll tell you, it got verified in, in East Point. So this can happen. So again, I've probably talked to, I hope I've not impinged too much in my 10 minutes. And I stand here to ask, respond to any questions you have.
You got a full .3 billable hours, and I will keep. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Lancaster, and for the documents that you provide. As everything you did send to us while not a part of this packet will be included as part of the meeting record. And I've already spoken with Sherry about that to make sure. You did give me a call before the meeting, but I was in a different committee meeting, so we didn't get the chance to touch base. Are there questions for Mr. Lancaster from the committee? Thank you, Mr. Lancaster, for being here.
Thank you.
I'm going to push pause for just a minute, before I ask Clerk Byron to come down.
Apologies, my mask, my mask broke. I'm going to replace it.
Next up, we have Barb Byron, Ingham County Clerk, who will present to the committee some of the opinions that she's rendered related to our previous passage of RCV ranked choice voting ballot measures. And her opinions there, so, ma'am clerk, floor is yours. Please try to stick around 10 minutes, although I'll give you a full 20 if you want. That's what we had last time, so I don't want to cut you short.
All right, thank you. And if it pleases the council, I would love to keep my mask on. I have small humans, and not all of them are of age yet, so. If you can't understand me, please just make funny looks at me, and I'll reevaluate the situation. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I always appreciate the opportunity to talk about elections, especially when given the opportunity to speak about Ingham County election administration. I further thank the council for the second consideration, showing a willingness to hear all of the facts prior to making your final decision. As you know, I have some grave concerns regarding the ability to run an election in the state of Michigan using ranked choice voting from a technical perspective, and additional concerns surrounding the underlying legality of such elections under current Michigan election law. To be clear, I am not here to argue the merits of ranked choice voting. If the people of Michigan enact legislation at the state level that updates Michigan election law to allow for ranked choice voting, and the state approves proper technology to allow my office to program and local clerks to tabulate ranked choice voting elections, I would fulfill my duties under the laws of the state of Michigan as I already do. However, until such a time as the law changes and the equipment is certified, I do not have the technology nor the authority to do so. I hope that you have had a chance to review the letter that I sent to the council ahead of your last meeting on this topic. In that letter, you read about the way that my office programs for all local, state, and federal elections, using the state-approved hardware and software. As I have previously stated, there exists no state-certified election equipment for the state of Michigan which allows for the programming that supports ranked choice voting. You are aware that the city of East Point, as a result of a federal court order, has implemented ranked choice voting in their jurisdiction. You may not be aware, however, that the clerk has had to employ freeware outside of state-approved software to complete the tabulation, or would have to be, excuse me, to complete the tabulation, or would have to be tabulated the results by hand, if they did not use that freeware. I am very conscious of the security risks, and would not allow Ingham County election data to be put through such an unsecured freeware program in order to produce unofficial results. As such, I would likely require that all results be tabulated by hand. Remember, that under ranked choice voting, the results are often tabulated multiple times as votes are rendered after candidates are eliminated. This process is arduous, and may take a significant amount of time, if required, to be done by hand. Should Lansing move forward with ranked choice voting without the state-certified hardware and software, and insist on tabulation through freeware, I would be forced to purchase new election servers and equipment that would be dedicated to the city of Lansing, because I would no longer be able to guarantee the security of the data coming into my office. As such, the Lansing system would have to be fully quarantined, and this council would expect to see a bill for the completely separate system, which could range into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is, of course, just the system that, on the county side of the elections. There would likely be additional costs to your clerk's office as well, as you undertake the process of turning over election equipment in preparation for a new system. This is not to mention the additional costs of having to provide adequate training for precinct workers, additional voter education to explain how ranked choice voting system works, and it doesn't, does not take into account the additional expenditures that my office would have to take to train my staff to program for this style of election, and the real costs associated with that. You also, in your communications before the last meeting, received a letter from the State Bureau of Elections detailing the various ways that ranked choice voting is not in compliance with Michigan election law. Supporters of ranked choice voting will point to the Home Rule City Act and the city of East Point as two rationales for how and why other cities in the state of Michigan should adopt ranked choice voting. This view is flawed. Currently, East Point is mandated by federal court order to use ranked choice voting, not by city charter. This is, to my knowledge, the only Michigan community to actually hold a ranked choice voting election. And it is not even by the process of a charter amendment that was being described in the run-up to adopting the ballot language last month. There are other communities that have adopted ranked choice voting into their city charters, Ferndale to name one. This was years ago, and to this day, they have not implemented ranked choice voting in their city because there is no state-certified technology to do so, and to run the election in that way would run contrary to the Michigan election law. It is certainly possible that Lansing could do what Ferndale did, and place ranked choice voting on the ballot with the understanding that it cannot happen currently under state law, and the awareness that the technology does not support it. If I were in your shoes, I would wonder what your constituents would think when they learn that you place no weight on the county clerk telling you that it's simply not feasible with the technology we have today. Also, what would your constituents think if they tell you through their votes that they want ranked choice voting, and it is added to the charter, only for them not to be able to take advantage of it, because Michigan state law does not account for it? Like much of the legislation that I have been combating in the state capitol, this proposal was clearly not drafted with a consultation of election administrators. I was not consulted in the weeks prior to this ballot initiative being put onto the ballot, and if I had, if I had been, I would have explained exactly what I'm explaining now. I understand that the majority of election interaction council has is with the city clerk, as you file as a candidate in the clerk's, in the city clerk's office. And it's the city clerk that runs the day of election process and the distribution of ballots to voters. However, please note that it is the county clerk that places your name on the ballot, programs the election, and ensures that the computers that read the optical scan ballots tabulate the ballots properly. And it is the county clerk that is best suited to understand the practical implications of ranked choice voting election. As I have mentioned, the election system that we utilize in Ingham County is not certified for the capabilities to run a ranked choice election. Further, the last election system, if, if the last election system is any indication, we will likely not be permitted to replace our system for over a decade, over 10 years. Our last system, which continued to run on Windows XP, the last election system, the computers that run our election, ran on Windows XP, for 12 years, we owned that system in Ingham County. Lansing elections runs on that system. Was finally approved after two years of work by the fed, federal and state government in 2017. Again, I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Should you have, ever have any questions about election administration in our great state, county, or the city of Lansing, it is my hope that you will reach out.
Any questions for the clerk? Councilmember Wood.
Clerk Byron, have you had any correspondence with the Attorney General's office or the Board of Elections on, on this item that you addressed this evening?
I have not. It's typically, if you're asking in regards to the governor and the attorney general signing off on the charter amendment, I have not. Usually, they will not respond, and allow something to be placed on the ballot.
Okay.
At least in the past nine years that I've served as county clerk.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, clerk. I guess since you were sitting in the audience, and you got a chance to hear the first speaker, do you have any, I guess rebuttal towards the notion that it is legal under current state law, based on the MCLs and the home rule, home rule and the cities exception that was mentioned?
So yeah, so I touched on it. Thank you, council member. I touched on the Home Rule City Act briefly. In Michigan, we are very decentralized, but your elections are still run through, in accordance with Michigan state law. So clerks, we love rules, we love procedures, we love dates and deadlines, you find that out when you file late for your campaign finance reports. That's how we operate. We operate with, with, with rules, with strict rules. So what we have, we have, Mr. Lancaster talked about Michigan election law, I primarily deal with the election manual. What has to be, how ballots have to be set up, what instructions have to be included, all of that, and all of that is not, it doesn't account for ranked choice voting. So the Bureau of Elections and I stand ready to assist with elections. What I'm telling you is, right now, this is not the way to do it. Doing it at the local level is not the way to do it. It's to do it at the state level, so that all of us, all of us being clerks, city, township, county, will have the structure and the uniformity going forward.
Just a little follow-up, put a little pushback. So, not to do it at the local level, but I guess from what I was reading, that it does say to do it at the local level. And it also sounds like the technicalities is one issue, but not a, like, a issue that would fail the, I guess it's not a, an issue that's like fatal.
What technicalities, I'm sorry?
Technicalities like instructions, or the things that were mentioned that aren't necessarily like in the MCL, besides local governments run elections, et cetera, et cetera.
I don't want to get too far in the middle of this, but I did invite everyone speaking this evening to present, not to debate. So if you have a question for the clerk, I'd stick to questions, but it's not, we're not trying to convince the clerk of a different opinion here.
Sure. So I guess, did, I guess, is it the state runs elections, or is it this, through the charter and election law, local runs elections?
So it typically depends upon what's on the ballot. So it is absolutely the county clerk, unless they contract, in Ingham County, I do not contract, we program in-house. So I program all of the election, all of the election equipment, so all of the tabulators that you feed your ballots through, I did, my office did all of that program. The city clerk does not do that, I do that. The city does not have that capability, I have that capability. So I program the election and disperse all of that programming out to all of the municipalities in Ingham County, for them to conduct the day of, the absentee ballot, absentee county boards, and the day of election stuff, processing. I order the ballots, I work with the printer, we do bulk ordering together, I assist with the purchasing of the precinct kits, I mean, so I do all of that, but it's the city clerk that runs the day of, and typically the absentee county board, unless they contract with the county clerk for a consolidated absentee county board. Then all of that, election day, the unofficial results do come to the county, and it's incumbent upon the county to post those unofficial results for the public. Then I work with the county board of canvassers, two Democrats and two Republicans, to go through the election. And if there are questions for the local clerk, in your case, the city clerk, that city clerk would be invited in to speak to the board of canvassers. Ultimately, the canvassers will certify the election. The only time the state really gets involved, I mean, is when there's a state or federal candidate or question, is when they're more involved than usual. So for example, this August election that I ran for the city, I did all of that stuff. I'm still working with the board of canvassers to try to certify the election, and I will be billing back the city of Lansing for those expenses. But then you'll also have expenses from the city clerk's office, all of your precinct workers, and, and all of that. But those tabulators that are in the precinct, those tabulators are owned by the city of Lansing. The programming comes from me, if that helps. Michigan elections are very decentralized, and it helps make our elections so much more safe and secure than other states, but it, it also adds to the complexity.
Sure, and I guess, and this is my last comment, I guess it was like more the time, place, and manner language that I was wondering about, because... place, and manner language that I was wondering about because that gets set, and then everybody else kind of adopts, and it makes it happen from there, it seems like. But, all right, that's all I had, just about the time, place, and manner.
Thank you, councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two quick questions. The first one is, you talked about in your presentation, you talked about freeware. And so as I'm looking at the email from Dominion Voting to our clerk, it talks about the purchasing of software and associated licensing fees in order to make it work. And so the city of Ferndale, I'm trying to, instead of reprogramming, they use this freeware? Is that what you're talking, is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding, yes. And I have not seen the email that clerks who have received from Dominion, so I can't really speak to that. But if there's purchasing of licenses or anything like that, then that would have to be state-certified stuff, and I don't know the status of that.
And then my second question is, and I just wanted to be clear for the record because you said, is it your opinion that ranked choice, the concept of ranked choice voting should be done on a state level versus on a local level so that it's more consistent? Or can you just expand that just a little bit?
Yeah, so the reason I say that is because the state produces all of the rules, the procedures, the handouts, the instructions and everything, and when you have clerks, if clerks were start to do that, it would be totally, it would be different depending upon what community you are voting in. And it would be preferred, at least I would prefer, the state to develop all of that and bring it down to the locals rather than the locals developing and bringing it up to the state.
Any further questions? Thank you, Madam Clerk, for making time. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next up, we'll hear from the Office of City Attorney. We're going to have Lisa Hagan down into the well. She offered to sanitize her own station so I'm not getting a clergy preferential treatment.
Before we get to Assistant City Attorney Hagan, who's headed down there, she's been working this issue from the beginning, so has a great knowledge of it. I was asked, I think at the last meeting, about what would be the effect if there was a charter amendment and we actually had an election and it was ruled by a court to be invalid? Not a one-line answer. It depends on when the lawsuit is filed. Is it before certification? Is it after certification? How much period of time is involved from the election or under the charter provision until the lawsuit and the court rule and the rules, and then there's an appeal? A lot of time goes by. So then the issue becomes, what happened, what if the final decision is it was an invalid procedure and all of the folks were elected improperly? What happens to all the decisions that happened during that period of time? Are they ruled as de facto officers and de facto decisions? These are all issues I just want to raise that they're, that have some concern. And then, does the old provision, let's assume the new provision is adopted and then ruled improper, or as a councilwoman would say, ultra virus? Does that automatically replace the old provision, or do we no longer have provisions in the charter? These are all legal questions that I'm just raising because I was asked that question. And before, as Hagan gets started, Mr. Lancaster, I've known for many years, I hope he doesn't mind this quip, but he's mentioned as a matter of weight of his legal opinion about 37 years. I might point out, the city attorney has 48 years, so I've got you by 11. Ms. Hagan.
Thank you. So we were asked to examine the legality of the ranked choice voting method. The bottom line is, while ranked choice voting is a constitutional method of voting, based on our analysis of Michigan election law, the Home Rule City Act, and the City of Lansing Charter, it cannot be illegally, it cannot be legally implemented until the Michigan election law is amended. Mr. Lancaster was correct that the Home Rule Cities Act is a vast and extensive power to the municipality to determine the time, place, and manner of how they operate elections. Elections can be bipartisan, nonpartisan, or any legal method of voting. The drafters of the City of Lansing Charter specifically included a provision that provides guidance that they lean on the state law where the city charter has essentially gaps. So where there are gaps in the city charter, we look to the state law. And so issues of canvassing, issues of counting votes, the conduct of the elections, we look to the Michigan election law, and we need to be in compliance according to our city charter. So that is, I guess, the bottom line is that while it may be a constitutional method of voting, the Michigan election law needs to be amended in order for it to be implemented in the city of Lansing. I know that you received an email last week discussing the city of Ann Arbor and that the city of Ann Arbor determined that it was legal. I would just point out that the city of Ann Arbor, in their ballot proposal, specifically identified a change to the state law before it can be implemented. So the city of Ferndale, as Clerk Byron pointed out, has been, ranked choice voting has been an option but not implemented for quite some time. Ann Arbor acknowledges a required change of the state law, and the city of Lansing would, in our opinion, be in that position as well.
Does that have a question? When can charter amendments be proposed to the electorate?
So a charter amendment would need to be proposed before any, I'm sorry, I just had it for some reason, and I need to just find the quote. It would be the next regular municipal or general election or at a special election held not less than 60 days after the proposal of the amendment.
Okay, so this can go on this November, next November, the November after that? It doesn't have to be this in 87 days?
It would be, so if the council were to pass it tonight, it would go on the next general, which would be in 87 days, as you said. If this council, if this body wanted to do a little bit more research and dig in and wanted to wait, it could be proposed at a future. It's not now or never.
Well, I ask because I see within a month or so, a statewide ballot committee has been formed, and it appears that they're looking to amend state law through the ballot. So we could do it simultaneously or after that change takes place if the voters approve or reject that. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Okay. Those are my questions. Other questions from Councilmember Dunbar?
So my question is, I haven't seen the Ann Arbor ballot, but if there's a whereas, this will not be implemented until and unless the state passes a provision, there's no reason not to add that.
Certainly, adding it is an option. The Ann Arbor ballot proposal has it in the whereas as well as in the ballot question itself. So right now, our ballot question says, as soon as the city acquires voting machine equipment approved by the city election commission. And I believe the Ann Arbor proposal speaks more to, in the charter itself, it would be amended to say, in the event state law allows for the use of ranked choice voting for the election of city officers, et cetera.
Okay. So if we were to try to do this today, would that language have to go back to the Attorney General for approval, or can we add it?
So the Attorney General has not review, I mean, so we, when we passed it in June 12th, the clerk, the city clerk sent it to them. The, I think, if you're speaking to the comments that my office received, those were not a formal approval from the Attorney General's Office. That was a subset of the Attorney General's Office, looking at it from a municipal ballot proposal standpoint and not as to the legality standpoint.
But it is going on the ballot in Ann Arbor. Is that, am I correct?
It was sent to the Attorney General. And so Ann Arbor passed it on August the 2nd, and they, just like we, would have to send it to the Attorney General and then the governor as well.
Okay. And will they get their turnaround time in time for the November?
I can't speak to Ann Arbor and how soon that turnaround happens.
Okay. So they may not be on the November?
I, like, I can't speak to it either.
Okay.
No, I need to.
Councilmembers Spitzley, then Jackson. Did you, are you good?
I just wanted to add something. The statute itself, the Home Rule City Act, says clearly Attorney General opinion. It used to be that the governor had to approve, but there's a case out of Detroit now that says the governor doesn't have to approve. That's another issue. But what the Assistant City Attorney is referring to is there is a unit in the Attorney General's Office that we work with for years who gives us advice as to how to, they have to approve the wording of the ballot issue, things of that nature. And so it's an informal give and take so that we, when it comes back to them, they've already seen it. That's just the way, that's what she's referring to.
Councilmember Spitzley, then Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. You mentioned it's part of the ballot language about voting equipment and about the Lansing Voting Commission in the ballot language. And I wanted to make sure because I thought that the Ingham County clerk was over the voting equipment. Did I not get that right?
We purchase equipment through our elections commission, but it's programmed by the clerk, and we have to purchase software and equipment that is approved by the state. I'm seeing now it's from the clerk, I'm seeing now it's from the city attorney. So I think that's the confusion.
That's what I was.
So, may I?
Would you like to come to the podium? Yeah. I don't want to get it wrong, but.
So when we went to use Dominion's system, that was a decision by the county clerk. The county clerk makes the determination on Dominion, Hart, or ESNS. All three of those vendors were state-approved and federally-approved. So it's the county clerk that makes the decision on the system with input from the locals, but because the county clerk does all the programming, it makes sense that that would be the case. If there were to be a different system that would be needed solely for the city of Lansing, I still think it would likely fall under the county clerk because I would still have to do the programming. So it's a partnership, I guess, to answer it. Now, there is a city election commission, and there is the county election commission, and those are two separate things as well, just so you don't confuse those two groups.
Councilmember, thank you, Madam Clerk, for answering that question. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. It sounds like we have a few different opinions, and some are backed up, most are backed up. My question is, isn't it true that if we pass it, it goes to the AG and they decide it's legal? Isn't that true?
The Home Rule Cities Act indicates that the Attorney General's Office approves as to compliance. So I would say that they review it as to form, much like your city attorney's office would review a proposed ordinance as to form. So they would review it, but I don't believe that they would opine as to the ability of the implementation. I think that's a separate question that's not contemplated as part of the ballot question.
Sure, I guess, but wouldn't they opine into the legality and whether we can or can't? And then it sounds like implementation is a different thing that has to happen after we decide to do it or if we decide to do it. So I guess, like, I'm wondering, in your opinion, is there harm to let the Attorney General use her office to decide the legality if the people decide?
I guess I'm.
Well, no, not if the people decide, because you got to find out first from them to allow the people to decide.
I think that probably the best answer that I can give you at this time is that I would defer to the city attorney on that. I think that there's been no dispute from the city attorney's office that the method of voting being illegal. What the city attorney's office has determined is, according to our charter, there is not a legal way for it to be implemented. And so as far as whether the AG's office approves it, would we be another city of Ferndale where it's on the charter as an option but unable to be implemented? And is that something that you or the voters would like?
And I'm sorry if I missed it, but why couldn't it be implemented after working out some of those technicalities?
So there's the technical aspects that the clerk pointed out, but there's also the provisions of the Michigan election law that our city charter leans on in compliance with doing canvassing, counting, conducting elections that would need to be amended before it can be implemented.
Sure, I guess that's my thing. If the state election law needs to be implemented or amended for us to implement, then therefore wouldn't that mean it's not legal? And the Attorney General would say, it's not legal because the Michigan election law needs to be amended. But if it's amended, then it would be legal. So wouldn't they look at that ahead of time?
I don't think that I can speak for the Attorney General's Office as to what they examine when they're looking at these ballot proposals.
You're almost getting to advisory opinion, and they're not going to do that, just from my view.
We also had Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I heard Jim say it's almost advisory unless we pass it and then have them make an opinion, then it's not advisory. And I think that's what part of the point was, just to go off your comment. But, yeah, that's, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bass?
Thank you, President Spatford, and thank you, Ms. Hagan, for being willing to present your vast knowledge on this particular issue. I have a question, or a follow-up related to Councilmember Jackson. You had mentioned that the Attorney General will approve compliance with the law. If we were to put language in like Ann Arbor did and for the suggestion of Councilmember Dunbar, would that cause an automatic approval for compliance? Because we're saying, you know, when state law changes, we'll do this. Would the Attorney General just come back and say, okay, well, when state law changes? Or would we actually get some sort of message back saying, this doesn't apply in these ways? Thank you.
Sure. As much as I would like to give an opinion and an idea, I really can't say what the Attorney General's Office might do if we changed it in a certain way. Unless we do it and submit it, I think that's the only way that there's going to ever be a definitive answer as to what the Attorney General is going to do. I can't guess for them.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hussein, then, what?
Yeah, I guess, I just have a question for my colleagues. What would be the purpose at this point of moving forward? When we took this up, my understanding was, and I clearly missed a few things, but my understanding was that if this was approved, we could then move in earnest, right? This partnership that Clerk Byron discusses, we could move in earnest to get equipment, and it might take some time, but to get equipment that is or able to be certified at the state level and that we could implement. But I didn't understand at the time, this clearly runs counter to, at this point, state law. So I guess I'm confused as to what the function or the purpose of this would be. Why would it not be more, I don't know, more constructive to, and I'm not saying that I would facilitate or kind of spearhead this, but why would it not be more effective or productive to pass a resolution as a body in support of changes at the state level in terms of election law to make this permissible? I guess one of the biggest, you know, and I referenced this when we originally took this up, I referenced voter frustration and confusion, and can you imagine if this was in fact passed, how many of our constituents are going to come to us and say, whoa, hold on, I thought that we passed ranked choice voting. Why is this not right, the way that we are actually carrying out our elections at this point? I can, I mean, anticipate, that could be a mess, right? And then I also wonder, when we talk about voter education in terms of the ballot initiative, how much we're going to actually be able to get folks to actually engage and buy into the education aspect if they understand, those that, right, that are paying attention, if they understand that even if this is passed, we can't implement this. So I just don't know right now what the purpose of this would be, and I do believe that there are probably other constructive, more productive. that there are probably other constructive, more productive channels to navigate if we really want to see a change at the state level. Thank you.
Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spadfor. This is to the city attorney's office. We have two proposals before us. One is the ranked choice, and the second is to amend the charter to take the primary election out. So if we put this on the ballot, we cannot implement ranked choice voting. Both of these pass, does that mean we no longer have a primary? Is one contingent upon the other? I don't believe it's written that way.
Yes, they are tied together. So until you would be able to implement ranked choice voting, the primaries would not be eliminated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll stay here. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I guess, just to reply briefly, so I don't think it's clear, like, completely clear that it's against state law. We've heard various opinions, and, I mean, frankly, the memo here, I mean, was, I mean, it's, it's persuasive, so it's not clear until the Attorney General says yes or no. And the only way to find out, it sounds like, is to send our language, and then if it passes Attorney General muster, then the people decide, and if they say yes, then it doesn't get implemented until everything else gets worked out, technicalities. So I guess, what, what we would be doing, why we should, is to find out and make sure whether it's okay or not, because we've heard various things, I mean, but it all comes down to, it sounds like, the Attorney General, who approves and will not allow any illegal ballot initiative to go on. So that would be our guidance for starters.
Okay. Councilmember Bex, then Dunbar?
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Jackson, I, I do agree with your sentiment here. However, I am afraid that the Attorney General could give an opinion here, and we could still be in violation of state law, and then be sued a year, two, three years from now, and then we have the legal questions associated with whether or not those candidates would properly be holding office, because we're not following legal precedent and all those things. So I, I think that's my concern, and something that we should be thinking about as we move into council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. Couple of questions. So based on what Councilmember Bex just said, I mean, if there was an opinion that came back that said it's not legal, then even though we passed it to put it on the ballot, we don't put it on the ballot? Correct?
Sure. Yes.
I mean, I'm assuming that they, like, so we wouldn't have that risk, because we wouldn't put it on the ballot. The other question is the amount of money that we're talking about, and I, I respect that there's, you know, potentially $100,000, I don't know how much it would be. But I very clearly remember the city clerk saying that we would save six figures by not having primaries. So in a one-time savings of the primary, by not having it, to invest in the equipment that's needed, or the software that's needed, that's a one-time expense that takes out the cost in perpetuity. So there's that. So I still think that we could put the language in that says, dependent on the state doing whatever, we know it's dependent on the Attorney General, whatever the cost is, I mean, if we're saving six figures by not doing primaries, and it would only cost us six figures once to do whatever's needed to amend the software or equipment, we're perpetually going to save that money moving forward. I'm just putting that out there as a thought.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hagan, for your time. I don't see any other questions from the committee. With that, that completes our first item on the agenda, dealing with elections and ranked choice voting. Anything to add? Right. The next item on the agenda is a resolution setting a public hearing in consideration of Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibilities Act bond for the Lansing Charter Academy. We have with us Mr. Coyman, who is in the audience. I know he's prepared to elaborate on anything the office of the attorney can, but I know we, this has been going through the OCA. I had a lot of questions on this that seem to have been answered, there, this, related to this bond. So if anyone from OCA would like to present, tell us what we're looking at.
The Charter School Bond.
This involves no... This involves no financial obligation on the part of the city. There is a, there's a bonding issue that is being proposed for the construction of a charter school, and then the financing requires that there be approval of the local public body after the, after a public hearing. So there needs to be a public hearing in the municipality. The matters being presented by bond counsel for the, for the schools, and it's basically, they have 70 charter schools across the country, and one is being proposed in Lansing called the Lansing Charter Academy. And since it is located in Lansing, the tax code requires a public hearing be held and approval by the applicable elected officials, and that's this city council. Notice had to be published before the hearing, and once it's decided, the mayor can sign it, and basically, that's the only obligation that the city has on this. It's a federal tax code requirement.
Thank you, Jim. How many, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead. How many days notice is needed on this? I noticed the resolution does not have a date in it, and I think that was because we weren't sure.
Must be published seven days before the hearing.
All right, so we can have the hearing at the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Carol, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wood?
Thank you. My question is, apparently, we are required to do this, and am I, you know, this is just ceremonial?
Well, it's, it's not ceremonial, it's, it's important for bond counsel.
Yeah, I get that, but I do not support charter schools, so, I mean, my support is for the public school system, and so what I'm hearing, though, is that, in essence, we are required to have this public hearing before this body. Is that my understanding of the legal law?
Before the what? Before it's filed?
Before the public body?
This body.
Before the public body, yes.
Yes. So, just so, you know, I'm making my point clear, if I support setting the public hearing, it's not because I'm supporting charter schools, I'm supporting the process that we're required to follow by the state bond counsel, the, the act. Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President, but Councilmember Wood brings up a, a good point. What if, what if this is voted down?
Just that you've held the public hearing that complies with the IRS code. That's basically it.
We're not approving the bonds, we're just setting a public hearing on the...
I, I get, I get what you're saying, and I do understand. I'm just asking, you know, what if, what if this body votes not to hold a public hearing? What happens? That's all I'm asking.
They don't comply with the IRS code, and they probably will not be eligible for the $12.5 million in bonds.
Thank you.
All right. Can you make the motion? Yes, Mr. Vice President. And what's the date?
Resolution.
All right, the resolution has been made, setting the public hearing for August 23rd at 7:00 PM here in City Hall Chambers, City Council Chambers. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dunbar? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
No.
Councilmember Wood?
No.
Councilmember Hussein?
No.
Councilmember Bex?
No.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Four of them?
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is a closed session, Mr. Vice President. Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. Before we go into closed session, I would just like to clarify for the folks that are here on behalf of ranked choice voting, based on what happened in the weeks past, we had moved to reconsider, then we had tabled, where does the vote actually stand on what we did and what we didn't do?
The item has been referred back to the committee of the whole.
Okay. So it is not, it's not been reconsidered?
It's been reconsidered and it's back to the committee of the whole. Sorry, I had to think about the question.
Okay, so it wasn't voted down?
It's a live item in front of the committee of the whole, but it's not on the ballot.
Okay. That, to me, is a, that's a difference between a reconsideration and a, and a tabling and moving it back to the committee.
Well, there were two motions made two weeks ago. One to reconsider the action of the council, which did pass and pulled that back, and then the second item was to re-refer both ballot proposals to the committee of the whole, where they said...
Okay. I think that, yeah, normally when I'm, I'm used to reconsideration, it means that there's another vote on the floor after it's been reconsidered.
There can be, which is what I was going to hand the gavel over to the Vice President real quick. Are you done with that question?
I'm done with this question.
I would like to reconsider the vote by which the previous item passed, and make that motion.
There's a motion on the floor, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Next up is a motion to go into closed session, Mr. Vice President.
Sure. Pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection E, I hereby move that we recess in the closed session to consult with the city attorney in connection with the following specific pending litigation. It's been determined that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the city of Lansing defendants concerning these cases. Arnold versus Fielder, the city of Lansing. Atkinson et al. versus city of Lansing et al. Burwell versus city of Lansing et al. Hawkins, Darling versus city of Lansing et al. Chen versus city of Lansing et al. City of Lansing versus Ann Javine Holdings LLC. City of Lansing versus OCOF Nonprofit Housing Corporation. City of Lansing et al. versus Purdue Pharma et al. Jane Doe, city of Lansing et al. 1. Jane Doe versus city of Lansing et al. 2. Fire Farm LLC versus city of Lansing. Funk versus city of Lansing et al. Hill versus Whitford and city of Lansing. Hardy versus city of Lansing et al. Hewlon versus city of Lansing et al. Lynn versus the city of Lansing. Lynn versus Mayor Shore et al. OPV Partners LLC and Resco LLC versus the city of Lansing. Overstrom versus the city of Lansing. Reed versus the city of Lansing et al. Spalding versus city of Lansing et al. Stafford versus Klein and the city of Lansing. Taylor versus the city of Lansing et al. Trevino and Hydro World versus city of Lansing et al. Wagner versus O'Boyle. Kyle Shaw Residential Properties LLC versus city of Lansing. And McLaren versus city of Lansing.
That is a proper motion, a roll call is required and a two-thirds vote necessary. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Spadfor?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar? Councilmember Bex?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes. No. No, no, no. No closed session.
Then you can't come.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-1.
At 6:24, the committee is in closed session.
Good to see you.
All right, whoa, it is something like 7:02, and we are back from closed session. Any further business? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. So I was a little confused. So I was a little confused earlier. Hello, hello? I'm sorry, I was a little confused earlier. I thought that when we reconsidered the vote, even though I know we had a discussion for the ranked choice, I thought that we were then going to vote. So I would move that we move it out to Cal or wherever we can, have that second vote at, whichever way it goes. So I make a motion to move the proposal to...
Which part of it?
Both of them, the question.
Which one first?
Rank choice voting, I mean, it's...
Which resolution are you asking that the committee to consider?
Okay, the resolution that we reconsidered last time.
We had two.
Both of them.
Which one are you asking for right now?
Let's do the first one that says to amend the charter to include ranked choice voting. And then the next one, amend the charter to get rid of the primary, that's a part of the ranked choice voting.
All right, the first item before us, the item before us is item two, resolution 2021-149. Any further discussion? Councilmember Dunbar?
That, that's the existing resolution, it doesn't have the language in it to, I mean, the only way to move it at this point is to put in the condition that, and we don't have it reduced to writing.
Well, today, sorry, so today's the last day, as everybody knows. Today was supposed to be reconsideration day, and ultimately, we'd like a vote, so I guess, if you want to make a friendly amendment, or I'll just change my proposal.
It's ballot language that needs to be written down.
Okay, well, can I have five minutes to write it, because today is the last day, and I really thought we were going to vote. I'm surprised that, like, we're not even voting at all.
It doesn't.
But today was the day we brought it back so that we could...
Further discussion.
Okay, so the plan was not to vote, ever.
Well, the agenda was released Thursday, and that wasn't on there. I suppose those questions could have come before this.
Oh, I really feel like I've been duped now, I'm sorry, just because we reconsidered it, I, so that everybody could put their input in, and then the input was put in, and then we were going to vote again, I thought, but I guess since it doesn't...
You have called for a vote on resolution 2021-149, as it was. Would you like to vote on that still?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I cannot vote on a piece of amendment language that by definition, and we've talked about, is flawed. It's, it's flawed. And, you know, so it's, in my mind, it's inappropriate to bring it forth. It's, it's a flawed ballot language, so I will not be supporting it.
Thank you. All those in favor of resolution 2021-149, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. Did you want to make a second motion, Councilmember?
No need for the second motion.
Very good, thank you. And there may have been some confusion as well. The item that we did reconsider this evening was the resolution setting the public hearing for the TERFA bond that is pulled back, that is sitting in Cal. It's not been moved back, so just for that clarification, that was the previous item that was referenced in the motion I made when Vice President Hussein was chairing the meeting. At 7:06, the committee of the whole is adjourned. For those of you who are waiting for the action-packed evening for the Lansing City Council, we will bring that back together at 7:18.